Six oh one, are we all set on zoom? Ready to roll? Okay, okay. I call this council workshop meeting in May thirty first, two thousand twenty three. Uh, to order and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. Please rise. So tonight's workshop is for one singular purpose, and that is to discuss the strategic uh planning. Uh, that that has been going on for the last several months. Uh, before we do that, as uh, as we always have as part of our agenda. Uh, there's an opportunity for citizens to be heard. So if anybody wants to be heard on any, any topic of borough government, come forward and be heard. I'm seeing anybody standing up here. Do we have anybody by zoom? Okay, then we'll begin with the strategic planning um discussion. And uh, before we, we jump right into that, uh, this is uh, hopefully everybody, I know everybody here is uh, is likely here for, for this discussion in particular. Uh, we've had a number of uh, events uh, that the public has been able to, to participate in over the last, the last several months. And and they participated online and surveys went out to, to all the homes and the, and the boroughs. You may be probably giving us a, a some detail on that, I'm sure, but uh, uh, this is just another step in that process to make sure the community is as involved as, as possible. So you may, may take it away.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so I'm Julia Novak, um, the executive vice president with RefTalis. And we've had the pleasure, my colleague Catherine Carter and I, had the pleasure of working with you all over the past several months. Um, our intention for this evening is to really finalize uh, that part of the framework that we said all along. We really want the council to own, which is the vision and the strategic outcomes. And so our focus tonight will be on providing you with um, an overview of the feedback that the community had for the draft that we developed together. Um, and then we give you all an opportunity to fine tune those statements and finalize the vision and outcome statements. Um, and then we'll just quickly high level talk about next steps. Um, what we have said from the beginning, so a little bit of repetition, but just to bring everybody to the same place. Um, when we do strategic planning with communities, we, we know that there are people who've been engaged in strategic planning. Um, they love it. They found it was a dusty thing on a shelf of an office they inherited. They've never done it before. That's this whole spectrum. And our job is to make the process approachable, and that's what we've tried to do here in Carlisle. Um, so we talk about it as the answer to three questions. What do we know to be true today? So where are we? What, what do we hope will be true in the future? Where do we want to go? And how are we gonna get there? What's our plan? And so throughout this process, we have been working to answer those three questions. Um, the intention of the project for, for the borough was to set the long term intention. Um, to incorporate feedback from both your internal and the external stakeholder groups. And you all put the, your foot on the gas in terms of getting community input and engaging uh, with the public. And then identifying those things that for Carlisle must go well. So tonight, we're gonna give you this overview of the community input. You do have, um, the council and the staff have in front of you, um, a copy of a little workbook that may or may not be useful. But sometimes it's a nice place to make some notes as we go through this. Our, our plan tonight, Catherine's gonna go through the um, community input with you. And then we're gonna begin the, the joy of group wordsmithing. Um, and so given the format for the evening, we're gonna try to do it in a big group. Um, I will feel like a taskmaster at times because my job is to keep us on task and get it accomplished. Um, but we'll start with the vision and we'll move into the outcome areas. If it feels too clunky, we might kind of take a break in the process and split into some small groups. Um, to do, to work on it, but we, we think we can. If we all think we can and believe we can do it as a big group without it getting too awkward, I think we can do it. So. Does that sound, sound good? Um, if you've had some thoughts in your mind after reading the, or hearing even Catherine remind you what was in this um, community input. You can make some notes as you go on words you liked and didn't like and things you want to change. Because our focus tonight really is on finalizing the words that make up your plan for the future of Carlisle. Okay, any questions before I turn it over? All right.
Thank you. Um, so before I kind of talk through what we heard from the community input, did just want to give a little bit of background in terms of kind of what we heard and in what vehicle. So um, over the last two months, the strategic plan has been considered within the community. And that happened in a couple of different places. Uh, we did three in-person community input sessions in March. Um, across the three sessions, we had about forty six participants. Um, we also did the Engage Carlisle survey. And so that was done both electronically and mail in. And you know, you all did a really, really great job of promoting that in different places and trying to get as much engagement in that platform as possible. So we have about two hundred fifty responses that came in there. Um, and then we also got student input on the plan. And so local high schools had classes do strategic planning exercises and then also use that as kind of a framework to look at the work that you all had done and provide some feedback. And so I know that across those different areas, there's, there's a lot. There is a lot of, of um, input that we've received and there's a lot to work through. And so as Julia mentioned earlier, tonight is really all about finalizing those statements. Some of the feedback that we got was related to the statements. Some of the feedback was related to the things that we want to do in each of these areas. And so the things that we want to do are gonna, are kind of being held until the next phase of this, when we really start to talk about implementation. What we've tried to provide for you in the summary and, and what I'll be going through is really what's more pertinent to what are the words that we need to use? What are the, the phrases and the things that will really resonate with the community that they've talked to us about in these different mediums? Around what the framework needs to be and kind of what success looks like in these areas. So there is, there is a whole kind of body of feedback that you're not seeing in this. Because it relates to really specific things that you all could choose or choose not to pursue. And that's not what we're focused on tonight. So just wanna kind of set expectations about. Um, tonight is really about finalizing that, that piece of the framework. So um, just as a reminder, when we think about the two elements of the framework that we went to the community with. We asked for input on the organization's vision and then also the strategic outcome areas. And so when we think about the vision, what we're really focused on is kind of what is our desired future state? What is it that we hope to be known for? What is it that we hope to achieve over the next five, ten, fifteen years and beyond? What are those kind of key foundational elements that help us to know that we're going in the right direction? Um, the strategic outcomes then are going to be those big buckets of things that really need to go well. In order for the borough to be able to achieve the vision that it's laid out. So what are those kind of vital few areas that we are going to focus our limited resources on? In order to really move the organization forward? And so those are, those are the two kind of components of the framework that we got community input on. Um, the input will also be used then as we move into implementation to inform what are the things that we're going to do to move the needle in these big buckets of, of um, of things that must go well. So um, just as a reminder, as far as um, what we went to the community with. Uh, the vision that we had drafted in the March work session was uh, Carlisle, Pennsylvania is a thriving and vibrant community. Where small town, where small town charm meets daring ideas. Where everyone feels safe, connected and welcomed. Where compassionate public servants care and where people are proud to call home. Um, so as far as kind of things that we heard when we asked people, you know, please react to this vision statement. Um, what we heard was that most folks from the survey, about eighty percent were positive about it. Felt like this, the statement resonated um, and did have some, some input on where we can make it even stronger. And so as far as the community input that we received. Um, some folks felt like it was a little bit vague and that there were opportunities to make these words a little bit more specific to Carlisle. Um, the daring word in the second phrase didn't connect for some folks. Um, I think that, you know, that had come out of the work session that we all had had. And I think that based on, you know, what had, the conversation that had happened that got us there, it made a lot of sense. But for folks who didn't have the benefit of that conversation, I think that there was a little bit of confusion about what that, what that meant or what that would represent. Um, compassionate folks had a little bit of a struggle around as well. Um, they want something that talks about maybe competence or excellent service delivery. Um, we heard in both the community input meetings and on the survey that uh, not everyone currently feels safe, welcome and connected. And so that's something that while they want, they, they also don't feel like it's true now. And, and that was part of the feedback that we received. Um, and then there were some concepts that folks felt like were kind of missing from the statement that were really important to them. So the concept of healthy um, was one that came up a fair bit. Um, also I wanted more of a focus on kind of environmental and economic sustainability. And also want to celebrate the diversity of the community. So obviously we have received a lot of feedback across a lot of different kind of vehicles. But these were some of the themes that we saw across when it came to the vision. Uh, when it came to the strategic outcomes, uh, we had six of those. Caring and professional, vibrant and thriving, dynamic and responsible, healthy and sustainable, welcoming and livable, and agile transportation. And again, we received a lot of feedback kind of across the different platforms. And, and what we've tried to do is kind of pull out those things that would help you to really crystallize around the words. Um, generally speaking, you know, the first question that we asked anybody about these was, does this resonate with you? Is this an important thing for us to be focusing on? And across the board, we had pretty strong um, agreement that these were areas that we needed to be focusing on. Um, in some cases, that was a little bit less. In some cases, that was as high as, you know, ninety plus percent of folks saying, yes, this is a thing that resonates with us. And this is a thing that we should be focusing on. So in general, I think conceptually, these are all concepts that folks care about and want to see us move the needle on in Carlisle. Um, so the first area, caring and professional. Um, feedback that we, we heard here, uh, when we look at the statement of delivering dependable quality services through our resilient, professional and caring staff. Um, the word resilient didn't resonate with some folks and they provided some suggestions on words that might fit better. And, and those are um, captured in the, the summary that you all have. Um, also had some other concepts that um, folks wanted to see in an area similar to this. Um, timeliness, honesty, efficiency, diversity, equity, consistency, competence. Were all kind of concepts that when we think about the staff and the folks who work for the borough. These are things that we might like to see in this statement is a recognition of the importance of each of these concepts. Um, other general concepts, um, want to see uh, in- increased accessibility of staff services and information. That was something that we heard really strongly was that people are looking for more information and they, they want to know more. And they want to be more involved. And I, I think that, you know, the, all of the outreach and the work that you all have done to get input onto the strategic plan is a great way of being responsive to that desire, but that is definitely a, a strongly held desire that, that folks have. Um, and then, you know, similarly, kind of increasing communication and public and resident involvement. So looking for more ways to get people engaged with what's going on in the borough. Uh, the vibrant and thriving area, so the statement that we had shared with folks here was inviting creative opportunities to build an inclusive community in our quaint and historic setting by fostering an economically diverse cohesive borough. Um, excuse me. Uh, this was a concept that about eighty-five percent of the folks who responded said, this is a good thing. This resonates with us conceptually, had some opportunities for um, other concepts to be included. Um, so the, the first bullet here is that um, the word cohesive doesn't necessarily resonate, resonate with everyone. Not everybody connects to that, because some people feel left out. And so if you're already feeling left out, then cohesive is maybe a turn off in this statement. Um, folks would like to see this be more active, so even just from the way that it's written, making it um, a more active statement with kind of more action verbs would be helpful. Um, there were a few folks who commented about how kind of the concept of inclusive community didn't necessarily fit with economically diverse. And so they felt like there was a little bit of a disconnect there in terms of the language. Um, words like quaint and historic, for some folks, make it feel old fashioned. Make it feel like this is something that's not changing, not keeping up with the times. And, and that's not um, something that they're looking for as we look to the future. Um, other concepts that could be in, or could be uh, included here would be innovation, sustainability and engagement. Um, with a recognition that we want to be attractive to businesses, open to mixed use development. Um, and more walkable pedestrian friendly. Um, the walkable and the pedestrian friendly piece was something that came up really consistently across different outcome areas. Um, in many cases, just kind of straight across. So that is definitely something that we saw as a theme regardless of the questions that were being asked. That is something that, that people would like to see. Um, and then the, the final point here, and we, we saw this be expressed in a lot of different ways. Was that a big part of being vibrant and thriving was having community organizations that are connected to each other. So looking for ways um, and recognizing the importance of those community connections to help create a place that is vibrant and thriving. Uh, the third area is dynamic and responsible. And so the statement here was um, deliberately managing the financial resources necessary to advance bold initiatives and build a stronger community. Um, here, you know, similar to the, the feedback on the vision. I think that dynamic and bold are, are terms that folks didn't necessarily know how to take in this particular context. And so we had a lot of questions about, well, what does this mean? Could you give me an example of a bold initiative? What sorts of things are we thinking when we say this? And so it wasn't something that everybody kind of instinctively understood as this is what we're talking about. And so um, that's something to, to consider as a change. Um, some folks also commented, we don't need dynamic, we don't need bold. We want to make sure that we're focusing on providing essential public services. And as, you know, that's, that's the level of what we're looking for. And so let's do that really, really well. Um, the word deliberately didn't connect for some as well. We had some, again, you know, wording suggestions, you can see those. Um, and then also opportunities to kind of consider referencing in here. Uh, resource stewardship, concepts around accountability and transparency, um, and being forward thinking. So making sure that we're doing all of the things that we need to in order to continue in, to invest in infrastructure. And, you know, again, a lot of comments around roads and public transportation, those sorts of things. So that you have a lot of, of different opportunities to invest in things that the community would like to see. Uh, healthy and sustainable was the um, most agreed upon area. It was something that resonated with about ninety percent of the respondents on the survey is both being really important. And then also the statement really connecting to what folks want to see in this area. So a lot of general support for this. Um, which is kind of what we, what we shared back with you all in our summary was, you know, this one feels like um, folks generally felt like it was what they want to see. Like this hit the nail pretty well, it seemed. Um, we did give some ideas of, of what folks are thinking when they see healthy and sustainable and what they'd like to be on the minds of the borough. But um, that's things like increased opening green spaces, enhancing tree canopies, more community gardens, reduced air pollution. Um, and then different sustainability initiatives. So many of the things that you all talked about when you were doing, when you were coming up with this outcome area to begin with are things that the community also wrote in. These are things that are important to us in this area. Uh, the, the fifth one is welcoming and livable. So building and maintaining welcoming, affordable and diverse neighborhoods that allow residents and businesses to flourish. Uh, the major concepts that we had people point out weren't here that they'd like to see. Um, including the concept of access and accessibility was something that came up in a bunch of different contexts. And then the statement doesn't explicitly reference housing. We have the word affordable, but it was something that folks felt like needed to be more explicitly called out here. Um, and so kind of calling out the need for there to be different levels of, of housing availability, affordability, all of those things. Um, and then again, in terms of, of things that folks put in this area that they'd like to see. Um, more events at different places around the borough. Um, you know, more outdoor activity spaces, um, more multicultural events. There were, there were a whole lot of different options for you all to consider once we get to the implementation part. But I, I think that those sorts of things were things that folks identified with this particular area. Um, and then the final area is agile transportation. So investing in safe pedestrian bike and transit friendly options that connect people to the places they need to go with convenient accessible infrastructure that reduces car dependency. Um, I think that here, the feedback that we heard was that um, some folks don't know what agile, like again, that word doesn't necessarily resonate. They don't necessarily what, know what that means with regard to transportation. And so have some suggestions for other words that um, could fit better, something like integrated or um, innovative or things that came out. Um, several community members in both the survey and also the um, in-person input talked about uh, pedestrian and bike safety. And that being something that we need to put a bigger emphasis on and, and something that they um, like about the statement is that it starts to call that out. But really want to see the implementation follow on this one. Um, and then other kind of things that, that came up as uh, things that we might focus on in this area, some of which are, are pretty well captured in the statement. Um, stronger enforcement of crosswalk laws, protected bike lanes, traffic calming infrastructure, pedestrian, bike safety campaigns, things like that. So, you know, I think that folks had a pretty good feel for what fit into each of these categories. And you can kind of see that by some of the suggestions that they were making. Um, in some cases, they have done some kind of good wordsmithing. And, you know, we have in our summary to you all have made some suggestions based on what we were seeing kind of across the different um, vehicles for stakeholder input that might be a good starting place in terms of um, you know, changing some words to make it more broadly appeal. But.
Okay. That is the summary. Yep. So let's see, I'm gonna stand over here. Is that how we're gonna do this? So uh, this is the fun part. So I'm accused sometimes of using the word wrong, but um, this will be fun. We're gonna walk you through each of these elements and kind of see where we land this evening. So um, I'm using the workbook as just a way to, so that might be helpful to you. That's the order that things are going to appear. So the first thing is the vision. Um, and you know, I, I, Catherine and our colleague Janay did the community input. And when I read it, I'm like, oh, but I loved daring, like I, you know, the energy from the meeting we were with, like so many of the things that I heard tonight, like agile. Oh, but I remember that conversation. So, you know, you all may feel really connected to some of the words because of the conversation we had. And while I could still argue they're the right words and you should be bold and daring, even though I want you to be bold and use those words. I also think it's important to remember that this is also a communication piece. And that you want the public to know what you mean and to know where you're going and know where you're taking them. So um, so kind of keeping that in mind as we walk through this, this evening and make revisions. So for the vision, um, the, again, you know, the original statement, um, art, you know, we have the original statement. And then in the community engagement notes that we gave you, and then here in the workbook, we also gave you um, alternative language that we proposed. And so what's different in, in the original one was where small town charm meets daring ideas. And so we suggested changing that to where small town charm meets innovative ideas. And um, instead of where compassionate public servants care. Um, to say where dedicated public servants care. So that's the, that's what we're suggesting. And what we're wanting to know is did you all have other ideas? Are, are there words you want to hang on to? What would you like to see as the vision statement? Final wording.
I have thoughts.
If thoughts, excellent. That's why we're here.
Based on, based on reading a, a lot of what people brought in. And, and it kind of, it, it goes between two things. The one that you're saying that there's some words that they, that don't resonate. But then I really focused in on the, the concept that they said that it's vague, right? And I don't want to be the live, laugh, love, the eat, play, stay. I don't want, like Carlisle is not, right? Uh, because we are unique and we, and I like unique language. So I guess one of the things I looked at um, is draft strategic outcomes. We have six, but we have four items under vision, right?
True.
So I did sit in on that first meeting and I did try to articulate that we took a lot of these things, like all these things, right? And we moved them together. And now looking at it, I think we moved too much. And I think people don't see themselves in that vision. So, and so that's my concern, like that's, the vision is what we're gonna put all over.
Yeah.
And yeah, I think people can see themselves more in those six outcomes. Cause we are, we articulate a little bit more, we use more terms. So I can't really recall if we crunched some of those statements because it just sounds better. But like, I was looking at one of the students that had submitted and they used, you know, it was, it, they did much more of like, like the second one. And so like this one was a vibrant and sustainable community where residents, businesses and visitors can thrive together in a safe and inclusive environment. I think people can see themselves there. I'm just gonna read the other two just because I thought that whoever the student was, please give them, you know, credit. Cause I, I enjoyed their, a community that values its rich history and diverse culture while embracing innovation and progress for a better future. And a community that fosters collaboration, engagement and empowerment, where every individual has a voice and opportunity to make a positive impact. I thought those were great. Like, I'm not saying we have to use it, but, but I can see that people could see themselves in there. And my concern is what we have here is, is too vague and that people don't see themselves in this. So I don't, I think part of it could be, and also even, even though the word compassion was called out, my concern is now is also the word care. Cause I'm afraid that that's more of the thoughts and prayers. And like, we, we care, but like, I, we actually do things, right? I care very deeply, but I, I show that I care by doing things. And so um, so I think that that's, that's the other, that statement, it is very kind. But I think people need to see that we're, it's work, like we're, this borough is working and we care and we show it by change. So my thoughts were maybe adding additional bullets or making those statements longer. But that's my uh, view when I looked at everything. So I don't know what anyone else has, but that was sort of mine.
And I, and I'll just say, so the four versus six piece of it. Um, the four don't even necessarily align with the six. Like you couldn't say this one is that and that one's this. Um, I think what you, one of the things that was in the input was healthy and sustainable is missing from the vision. And yet it's very clearly an outcome. And so is that what you mean when you say, you know, to, to, a place to live? It, it's, you know, you all have to decide what the most important words here are for the vision. Um, just from a style perspective, I mean, your, your statement is unique. I will, you know, it's different from a lot of the places, it's different from those types of sentences that you just read. I mean, it was very unique to your all's context. Um, having the six um, outcome areas defined in the vision, I have seen that done. And it's, you could simply do that. Um, and, and you know, maybe make a, a, a statement about it. Where caring and professional staff serve the public. Where, I mean, you know, where vibrant and thriving economy, blah, 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 creates opportunities, whatever those words are. You could do that if that's what you want. Um, you need to make it yours. And so I'm hearing you say some suggestions, but not really a wordsmithing suggestion.
Right. I guess my, I'm just also thinking about how we will use it.
Right.
So, so if I'm saying, handing this out and someone is like, that's not me, that's not, or like, I don't see myself, I don't see my community, I don't see my neighborhood in that. And I have to say, oh, but wait for the outcomes because like, and then I have to have another document or something, but that's the thing that I keep seeing. So I want, that's the first thing people are gonna see. They're gonna see these other things secondarily. So um, that, so that, I don't know, I want to hear everyone else's, but that's, those are my, my thoughts.
Okay, so it's good to get it out there. Others, yes, Joel, thank you. Joel, write Jeff.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Joel, Jeff.
Yeah.
Two shirt ons.
I kind of feel maybe the opposite of what he's, I, I think it's too long. I've actually been thinking about this like since we wrote it. I think it needs to be like condensed. It is my fault. It's entirely my fault. Yes. Yeah, I'm the type of person who like helped her write this and immediately afterwards thought it was terrible. Um, um, so, so like, I think it's too long because if it is our like headline thing, I mean, that's a lot to like.
Yeah.
You know, it's not, it's a lot to have in like our banner or something like that, right? Um, I don't know, I'm still like playing around ways to, to change it. I also like I, um, one thing that I was thinking of is, is, you know, in, in the feedback, there's the like, what's one word to describe Carlisle? And the most used one was historic. So I don't know if we should like incorporate history or historic or something like that in there in some way. Um, I'm also a little torn on the like, it being too aspirational or too vague. In that I, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but my impression was that the vision is supposed to be aspirational. As opposed to be, as opposed to being like, this is what we believe. So like a number of people said that they, you know, they don't feel that Carlisle is safe, connected and welcoming.
Um, but that's where you want to go.
Right. And I just, I don't, I, to me, it doesn't make sense to say we want our town to not be those things i- if this is like our. I, I guess I'm interpreting this vision as like what we see the borough being. Um, so I, I think like being more aspirational makes sense. Um, I, I get the comment that most people and that you shared that like it, it should be more unique to Carlisle. I, I don't, I, I don't exactly know how we, how we do that necessarily, I guess. Um, but I guess my, my, my general take is that I think we should condense it, which is kind of the opposite of what you said. So.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, I don't know, like on my way here, I was like playing around with some stuff, but uh.
But you're not gonna say it out loud yet, yeah. The aspirational piece, I would just kind of also say that applies to the outcome statements as well. You know, if, if people said, yep, this is true, this is true, this is true, I would say you're not trying hard enough then. You know, if, if people said, yep, this is true, this is true, this is true, I would say you're not trying hard enough then. Um, if they're saying, we're not there yet, then exactly, that's right, we're saying it, we need to make it happen. And what are the things that we need to do in order to get to this, cause this is our destination? So uh, I would encourage you to keep that aspirational mindset as we work through this this evening. Other thoughts on how to recraft the vision?
So um, I'm sorry. Um, so I'm looking at what the students wrote as well. And so mine was a, was a different one, under the same bullet, but a little different, only because um, so and, and as well as Kate coming from the nonprofit world. And understanding that, being a part of that world, seeing how we all work together. And I think there are a lot of people who don't know that. Um, if they're not, if they're not doing the work, they don't necessarily know that, we're together in a lot of things. So the one that uh, um, one of the, that the student wrote, the third one is the one that kind of stands out for me, a community that fosters collaboration, engagement and empowerment, where every individual has a voice and opportunity to make a positive impact. Now, I do agree, yes, now I do agree with some who said, you know, they don't necessarily feel like they're, like they're safe and but that's something that we're working towards. And you know, stating that we are, you know, where every individual has a voice and an opportunity to make a positive impact, that's what we're trying to do now. So like we've been doing these, we've done what, two town halls, um, where we went to the people and we heard them, we listened to them. They got to listen to us and, you know, give feedback to us. I think that that's something that we're really working towards and the vision is just that, it's a vision for what we want. So, I mean, I'm really, I like that. I, I think that she kind of hit it.
So you, you would actually propose that statement as the proposed vision? And so we're trying to find it, so we can, if you could say it a little slower, she'll type it up there and
I'm sorry.
We're trying to try to keep up, because you're actually putting something out there, so give us, give us the language.
Okay, um, a community that fosters collaboration,
Okay.
engagement and empowerment, where every individual has
Go ahead.
Um, where'd I leave it? Has a voice and opportunity to make a positive impact.
Okay, did we miss anything after empowerment? No, a community that fosters collaboration, engagement and empowerment, where every individual has a voice and opportunity to make a positive impact.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so you're proposing that as the future statement, okay, um, Joel.
I'm wondering if, starting out with thriving and vibrant, um, and then followed by safe and connected, well, it, it seems like thriving vibrant is going beyond, life is pushing, yeah, is being, uh, I think be, beyond sort of
Surviving.
Yeah, it's, um, and that sort of implies being safe. I, I guess um, if we're looking at taking out words and replacing them, um, I would just say it, it's hard to thrive and be vibrant without being safe, connected and welcoming. And I think if we're trying to balance things, I, I, I might suggest we take some of the words on the right and maybe fill it in to the second bullet. Um, that's just my thought. And, and I did wanna follow up on just I, I, my interpretation when people were, were responding on the vision statement, it's, it seems like a, a lot of them were assessing whether this was our current assessment and, or aspirational and, and, and is that, since you do many of these, is that a typical thing where
Yeah.
Um, it, it's, it's tough to understand and, and interpret what people are saying in the correct manner.
Yeah, it's especially challenging at the draft stage, when you take it out there to the community and they say, oh, we're, well, that's not what we are yet, right? Would you like this to be? This is where we're going. So a couple of things, usually this is preceded by the word vision, right? And so our vision is this, and I think that then implies we're not there yet, this is where we wanna go. So that it's, it's not uncommon to hear that, because people are just simply reacting to words. They're not necessarily thinking about the context of how the whole strategic plan fits together. So I think it sorts itself out when we get to the final framework. The, the vision statement itself, so I, I hear you saying the thriving, um, diverse and vibrant, you know, it, it, when I hear those words, that to me is the outcome, right? What you want is for this community and for every individual in it to, to be thriving, to have, you know, vibrant life, um, for the community to be diverse, it, it's possible to take those words, that outcome, and maybe put them at the beginning of the statement that's Brian read. Um, and so it would be Carlisle, Pennsylvania is a thriving, diverse and vibrant community that fosters because then it's like, and here are the things we do to help encourage this to happen. Um, because the, the rest of the statement as she read it is very individual focused. Like every person matters is what I hear. And so every person matters and we want everyone to get to this level um, for our community. So if you marry those two, maybe we're getting somewhere.
I'm gonna move some of the bullets into the notes section, but I'm not deleting anything, I promise.
What do you think? I see you about to talk.
I was just gonna ask, so Jeff, do you think this is too long? I mean, I'm not being, I'm really, I'm not being funny, I'm really not.
I don't know, I mean, this is almost, I don't know if, part of the, the way I read the feedback is like this is almost just too buzzword heavy, if that makes sense. And I feel like this is almost making it m- more so. Like I don't know, uh, I don't know, I, 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 we talked about this initially, like I don't know that we need to have vibrant and thriving both in there. I think that gets to be a little redundant, maybe. Yeah, I don't know, I wrote something that is kind of different than that, but it's more just like retail.
I'm gonna say, I wanna hear it, you, I know you're not ready to show it, but
Right, sure, yeah, I mean, I don't think this is great either, but this, this is kind of before we started discussing, so what I put was
Say it slow enough for Catherine to capture as you talk, okay?
Right, yeah, I decided to use a colon, because I used bullet points the first time, so why not do something like that?
Okay.
Um, so I just, I, I said Carlisle, Pennsylvania, colon, where history, small town charm and innovative ideas meet to create a sa- safe, welcoming and thriving community that people are proud to call home.
Okay, that was a little faster than she can type.
Too fast, yeah, I'll go slower this time, right.
Pause for a minute, I knew it, I'm gonna press the pause button, just like I did.
I got to the colon.
Yeah, good call.
Calling, okay.
Where history, uh, small town charm and innovative ideas.
Pause. Uh, the O.
Meet to create a safe, welcoming and thriving community
Yeah.
That people are proud to call home. So I mean, in some ways, I was just kind of, that was what I had like written before coming this evening. So I kind of was just reworking what we already had, um, but even then, I'm almost like, is that too long? So I don't, I don't know, I don't know what others' thoughts are, and that's a little, that's definitely different than uh, the, the other, the other
The other one, which is like more individual centric about the people in the community, and this is definitely much more the vision for the community.
Yeah, but I, I do like the, I, I don't, sorry, I feel like I'm talking too much here.
Not at all.
But you know, I do like the where every individual has a voice and opportunity to make a positive impact, um, so I'll stop talking.
Community. How about in thriving the community where every individual has a voice and opportunity to make a positive impact, comma, and are proud to call home? Take that last thought, put it in there. And now it's twice as long, but better. Cause that's what you were going for. And what we can do is we can kind of say, alright, let's try this on, we'll work through the rest and kind of come back to this. But we have a few options out here now. I, I would love to hear from others, um, just to kind of get a sense what, you know, do you like the directions it's heading or did you like it better before? Can I put you all on the spot? Mayor, Sean, Kate, who haven't spoken yet?
So I, I admit, um, a little bit of tonight will be catch up for me, since I missed the Saturday meeting and, and I apologize for that. So I'm still trying to grasp, I think I agree with, with Jeff's initial comments of reading the feedback and, and if I'm a citizen, I think sometimes, and we get feedback outside of this process of like, government can overcomplicate things, right? So I'm struggling with, is the vision our tagline? Um, cause if it is, I feel like those are still too long, right? So I'm even looking, one of the students, um, posted our, our borough sign excellence in community service, right? Like is that, and this just might be me struggling with it, is that a vision or is that a tagline or are they the same thing? Um, and then reading, cause the students all did a great job, you know, I, I'm seeing, um, one of these that I'm looking at. You know, they say there's four bullets and it's, they're a little longer, but healthy, inclusive, safe and a community that shares. And I'm thinking like, if we are telling the community where we wanna go and this is our vision, are we wordsmithing too much where they're gonna check out? Or that one pager or that social media post is gonna be like, I'm still confused, this is still very vague. And I know we'll, we'll get to kind of the, the outcomes and, and kind of what the framework and the goals are gonna look like. I just don't wanna lose people before we get there. So I guess that's my way in asking if you could just bring me up to speed on what is, do you have a
Yeah.
A thirty second pitch on what is the vision supposed to be?
It's not your, it's not a marketing plan, we, we, we work in, um, in Johnson City, Tennessee, and they had just gone through this whole branding exercise. And they came out with their, their branding tagline is we go all out. When we did their strategic plan, they toyed with, do we include that in our vision or not? They decided very explicitly not to, in part because it was very much embraced by the organization as part of the mission statement. But it is, what we're doing today is not a tagline. And so I would encourage you to paint the picture in the vision for what you want Carlisle to be in, in the future. That's really what it's doing. Um, if it's memorable or rememberable, that's a bonus, but it's really painting that picture of what you want. Can I hear from Mayor and Kate first? Yeah, go ahead. Okay, Kate.
Uh, well, I would just, I mean, I, I was sort of agreeing with the, the term that was saying that maybe this is a little long. Um, and when, when Jeff, um, proposed his, where he took, you know, your bullet points in the original and put it into, you know, one small thing, I think before you added the, where every individual, I think um, is, is, is more where I think it should be.
Okay.
Where history, small town charm and innovative ideas meet to create a sa- safe, welcoming and thriving community, you could even end it there.
End it there, okay, so don't add back in that individual concept, alright.
Yeah.
Mayor.
I, I do prefer where we're going with this one, although the, sort of the lawyer in me loves bullet points and numbered paragraphs, um, you know, the, the, the the, the idea of having just a phrase, something simple that people can remember and recite and that it's meaningful, I think is, is better than having, you know, here's point number one, point number two, point number three, so forth. Um, I think um, Kate's suggestion just now is, is good, but I, so I'm, I'm sort of vacillating between I want people to individually feel this, right? And, and know that it's about each and every one of them. Um, while still being a statement about the community. And I'm not sure how to thread that needle any, any better than the three.
So the, the bottom one is kind of where you're leaning, that's where Kate's leaning, but you're worried about leaving the individual out.
I, I, I was drawn to that sort of, you know, the, the meaningful statement about in, you know, elevating individuals.
Okay.
And, and, and in part because, uh, you know, reading through the, the, the comments that we got on a number of uh, the, I don't know if it was the, the, the statement or, or elsewhere, um, about those who are sometimes left behind. Um, and uh, especially when we get into talking about housing and homelessness later on. And so that individual aspect is important to me, that we see people as individuals and not some collective group of, of people.
Yeah.
Alone, as simply as a collective group of people, that were, that, that were each, both in part of the whole, both an individual, part of the whole.
Uh, you could even just say for every individual in thriving community, for every individual that lives here. Kate, and then I'm going to go to Joel.
So I mean, I, I get, you know, that's one of the things that I noticed in it, is a lot of the comments and the feedback were that, you know, we, it, we don't feel that it's inclusive, but that's the aspirational part. And I think that the word welcoming does cover, um, the fact that it's for everyone. Um, unless you just wanna use, just put the word inclusive in there as well.
Hmm, okay. Safe, welcoming, inclusive and thriving community, okay. Joel, that was
That, that was one of the two things I was gonna recommend that might help bridge the gap there. I, I think it's important to reflect this individual in it. I'm not in love with small town charm for reasons that it does sound a bit quaint, although I love, um, and maybe to substitute, to make it personal, to make this more personal, what about something like Carlisle, Pennsylvania, where our history shapes innovative ideas? And then the rest.
Our history shapes innovative ideas, okay? To create a safe, welcoming, inclusive and thriving community. Yes, we need to stay healthy and then we get almost all the other.
Like I'm keeping track, you, you got a lot of words that are
Yeah, uh, yes, Sean.
And, and I know I said, I don't want it to get too wordy and I'm gonna go against that, cause I, I like where the third one is going. I almost wonder, um, to the mayor's point, if it's worth adding, um, at the end where every individual has an opportunity. I don't even think you need to make, to add to make a positive impact, cause I think, at least where my head is going, uh, opportunity is important for folks and they might not, you know, opportunity to get a job might not be an overall positive impact to the community, but it is personally for them, so, um, I don't know if that, if that simplifies it or forgetting.
Every individual has opportunity?
Has an opportunity, has has opportunity.
But yeah, what, exactly what you just did, is move thrive there.
Move thrive, where every individual has the opportunity to thrive, because it's the vibrant community thriving individually. Okay, yeah, I like that. Where history shapes innovative ideas to create a safe, welcoming and inclusive community where every individual has the opportunity to thrive. What do you think? Live with it for now? Like where it is? Joel's nodding his head, of course, he spoke last, so of course. Kate, what do you think?
I don't, I don't love shapes as the verb there, but I don't, I can't think of any, a word that I like better.
Yeah, alright. We can always ask Bill Gates, we do that game sometimes.
The only uh, thing that I think we maybe lose from the second one going to the third, but I don't know how, how to find one word to, to make, is basically like, it's the impact, like that everyone can participate. Everyone, like you don't just exist in Carlisle, you, yes, you're part of a community, but like that you can voice your opinions, but also like, like the impact part of it. I think that that's something that Carlisle welcomes, um, I don't know about other communities do, but like that's something that I think that participation and
To thrive and make a difference.
Yeah, like that we want that, we want active residents in our communities, we're a better place because of it. So something like that. I guess that's excellent in community services.
So, yes. I would say yes, and, and, and I say that because I know that, you know, there are people who don't feel like this is, they're here, but they don't feel like they're, like they're being seen. I, I've heard it, I was one of those people who was saying it at some point, so I, I hear that and understand where that comes from. And because Carlisle is made up of people who come from all different types of places now, you know, they need to be able to see themselves and feel like they are welcomed wherever. There are people who do not go outside of one area of where they live. They don't, they don't come over to the south side, they say exactly where they live in their neighborhood. Like they've had to, there are organizations that were created They've had to, there are organizations that were created to be there specifically because they don't come over, because they're not, they don't know if they fit in or if they're welcome, so I like exactly what you said, you just said, I, okay, that works for me.
So I'm thinking we sit with this for a little while and then this is kind of where we are right now. And let me just talk a little bit about process. So it's almost seven. We have an hour. We've got six of these to go through. I I six more. Um and so I don't, I don't necessarily think that we can accomplish that in an hour if we stay in a committee of the whole. So if we work in some small groups, um and I'm a taskmaster, would you all be willing to do that? The idea would be you would work in a small group and you there would be two or three council members in each small group. You would duke it out for the language that you then come back and propose to your colleagues. And you would all get to have a say, obviously, but now it's coming back to you informed by the input that your colleagues have considered and and bringing that to you. Does, do we think that can can work?
I I think we need to make it work.
So I I agree. So let me, let me just, um thi- this is how we'll do it. Well, for those people who might be watching on Zoom this evening.
Let me just check in on it. Joyce, do we have anybody? Problem solved.
Problem solved. So what we're gonna do is I'm gonna, just so that you all don't necessarily have to move. I'm gonna have one, two, three, okay, groups. And the way we're gonna do it is
Well, we have four people in the audience. Um at this point, and I would just invite you to sort of take a chair and and move on up. Yeah, or yeah, at least move to the front row.
And and it it won't be long in the small group because we.
Not, not that you're not a person, Maddie.
Um you three will work on dynamic and responsible and healthy and sustainable with Richard Owen and Jer. So you guys bring small chairs up here.
Okay, well, I'm giving you all gold stars because everybody finished under the fifteen minutes that I gave you, so way to go, you all. So we'll start with caring and professional. Um, I'm just gonna call you all group one, so um, do you want to just very quickly tell the group what you did and why?
Um, so we kind of exchanged, we took out a couple of words, added some different words to it because we felt like it fit a little bit better. I know we talked about the staff and we talked about the word resilient, we also talked about um, dependable, so we, we took some words out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so you want me to go ahead and read it?
Yeah, sure. With, with real passion.
Okay. Um, no, we said, um, ensuring responsive quality services by the borough's knowledgeable and committed staff.
Okay. Reaction from your colleagues, Joel, please.
I just wanted to add, uh, w- we were trying to be responsive for some residents. Uh, issue with the word resilient by recognizing uh, that our staff is very adaptable and agile. Um, but uh, maybe uh, a word, we, so we use responsive uh, as a replacement for resilient, recognizing that our, our staff are not robotic and they are very uh, innovative and yeah.
Excellent. Any feedback? Yes, Jeff?
Um, I, I don't, what was the motivation for changing um, our to by the boroughs? I kind of, so personally for me, I kind of like saying our knowledgeable and committed staff as opposed to by the boroughs.
Hmm.
I don't know it. I know that was kind of changed in the proposal, the proposed version, the proposed language, I don't know what others' thoughts are, but I, I like the our instead of the boroughs. It kind of like is more, it's like more like we're, we're all in it, if that makes sense, I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, so go back to our, okay? Going once?
Um, I like, I prefer dedicated to committed, but I'm willing to be.
Knowledgeable and committed, um, knowledgeable and dedicated. One of the things to just remember in all of this too, the, the values for the organization, you might remember Susan going over them at our session. Um, one of the values is committed, commitment, and so it's, and resilient, so it's committed, it's care, right? Committed, accountable, resilient, and ethical, so it's possible that using different words here actually makes it more impactful. Because we have those other words. And I think the ethical one kind of feeds to or speaks to some of the community input around trustworthy and honest and things like that, so I feel like you hit them all this way. You live with that, Kate? Yeah. Okay, next. Vibrant and thriving.
Yes, so for the second one, I can say I wasn't crazy about um, uh, in our historic borough. Not that, you know, our, our borough isn't historic, you know, there's a lot of history here, good and bad. I just wasn't crazy, I wasn't in love with it. Um, and that's, that's all I can really say is to that. Um, and everybody said, oh, well, okay. Um, and so then we said, building an inclusive and engaged communities fostering, by fostering creative opportunities, community connections, and a diverse economic base attractive to residents and visitors alike. Joel likes, uh, um, he wanted for people, because it has, we have tourism here, we do have a lot of things that people come here for, especially at the car shows. So he wanted that to be in there some way, and that does, I think, we all felt like that does kind of sum us up. We're saying that it's attractive to our residents, but it's also attractive to our visitors. Um, it kind of brings it all together. Correct? Did I say that right?
I think it kind of brings a little bit of leaving the his, history behind, because why do people come to Carlisle? They know it's historic, so uh, it gives a nod that a lot of our economic vitality is going to be connected to people visiting.
A- and at least for now, I think there was something about historic still in the vision, so, so a- again, as a framework, it's not lost. Did you, did you economic base attractive to residents, businesses, and visitors? Is it important just to say that to your business community? To add businesses after residents? Or not? It's up to you. Nope, then leave it out, that's fine. Nope, it's up to you all. Okay.
I, you know, I would, I would include businesses, um, and I know there were, there were comments about, um, the, yeah, although our, our storefront vacancies are probably at just about an all-time low, there, there was that recognition. And clearly at times, uh, it's been, it's been, uh, you know, getting to the point of troublesome. Um, it's not there at the moment, but I, I think it's important, because it's not businesses, business owners who may live in North Middleton, they're, they're not just visitors, although they're not residents, and I think it's important.
They have a real stake, yeah. Okay, is it work for folks? Okay, next. Dynamic and responsible, this one, there was just two changes, so we were able to highlight them, go ahead, Mayor.
This is why we got done so quickly, just wait till you see the next one. Um, responsibly managing the financial resources necessary to advance innovative initiatives, provide essential services, and build a stronger community. So what we're trying to do here is balance, um, we, we remove, we changed successfully to responsibly, changed uh, ambitious to innovative. Um, recognizing that, again, in some of the comments, as far as ambitious goes and daring, um, just trying to be something that's um, a little more balanced, um, and, and perhaps more meaningful to, to um, folks, you know, a broader base of folks. Uh, and then really, again, responsibly seems to line up a little bit with the management of, of financial resources. So we're, we're trying to provide a bit of a balance in this where we're going to be responsible, but we're going to do great innovative things.
Reflections, comments, I've seen and hearing heads nod. Nailed it? Great work. And the next one's even easier, you said.
There we change, when you, when you have ninety percent approval on something in, in government, you just, you stick with it.
Leave it alone.
Um, so that's exactly what we did.
Everybody on board with that? Okay. Well, we gave the harder ones to the last group, so Jeff, welcoming and livable.
Sure, um, so we kept the welcoming and livable top line, uh, and then there, there was the comment that while the statement implied the word housing or implied affordable housing, it wasn't explicitly in there, so we kind of went back and forth on whether including that word was redundant or not, in the end, we obviously decided to include it, include it, and there were some comments about parks, outdoor activities, so that's why we kind of came up with including recreational opportunities, so what we went with is welcoming and livable, building and maintaining, inviting and safe neighborhoods through affordable housing, and engaging recreational opportunities where residents and businesses flourish.
Reactions. You like it? Okay then. Next.
So, so maybe a little more controversial and difficult, as even I recall from the very beginning, this was like, one of those more difficult. Um, so a lot of the feedback was i- against the agile transportation top line, and the proposal was using accessible and connected, which we felt was better. Um, however, based on the comments, we thought the original statement was more understandable and addressed the comments better, because there's a lot of feedback about me, you know, being more pedestrian friendly, bike friendly, reducing traffic congestion, um, things of that nature, and from our discussion, we felt that like the proposed, that the proposed statement was maybe too jargony, um, from what I recall from the beginning, there was debate about whether or not to use multimodal transportation, and multimodal transportation system just sounded too jargony. Um, so we felt that the original statement, investing in safe pedestrian, bike, and transit-friendly options that connect people to the places they need to go, with convenient, accessible infrastructure that reduces car dependency, was more understandable. Um, so that's why we, we kept it, um, and just changed the top line, not sure.
So accessible and connected, and then that statement. How do y'all feel about that? It's like, yeah, it sounds more approachable, maybe.
Yeah, that was exactly, what I wrote in my notes was, my neighbor doesn't know what multimodal means.
Yeah. Or agile, perhaps, agile transportation. Kate, you like it? You can live with it? Oh, I know, I'm so much happier, trust me, it bothered me so much that it was not the same as the other five. Yeah, so all on one slide, just very quickly, just to kind of see it. Um, caring and professional, vibrant and thriving, dynamic and responsible, healthy and sustainable, welcoming and livable, accessible and connected. All right, let's take a look at that vision statement again. Carlisle, Pennsylvania, where our history shapes innovative ideas to create a safe, welcoming, and inclusive community where every individual has the opportunity to thrive and make a difference. You like that? So it sounds good a half an hour later. Right balance, yeah.
I, I maybe not like in love with it still, but I think I like it better. Um, and I, I don't know, I feel like, I know, right, yeah. My ideas are always the worst ones in my brain, so.
I still don't love shapes, but another, another word is alluding me.
Well.
There's, there's a lot of agreement on not liking shapes.
Guides, directs, informs.
I think I like guides or informs maybe better than shape. Guys?
Guides? Guides innovative ideas, informed innovative ideas. I think you can in, I don't know, guide an innovative idea, inform innovative ideas, if you think about it as informing brainstorming, it almost sounds like, right? Our history. Guides feels more active, okay. Guides it is. Yes?
How about propels?
Propels. Ooh, that's active. Where our history propels innovative ideas, or innovative thinking.
I, I like that, um, I, I, um, I'm going to further on in the statement, I, I don't, do we just, if we just said safe and welcoming community where every individual has the opportunity to thrive and make a difference, does that still work? I don't know if we need the word inclusive, um. I don't know what others' thoughts are on that, I don't, I, I just feel like, to me, we're already encompassing that if we're trying to go for concision or conciseness.
So take out inclusive and just say, create a safe and welcoming community where every individual has the opportunity to thrive and make a difference, because inclusion is implied.
I, I feel like within that statement, we're implying that it's inclusive with everybody.
I think it was just added a lot in a lot of comments about inclu- inclusive not being like articulated, so I would I would keep it in personally, I wouldn't actually remove, um, I was gonna say we could get, like, we could swap it for welcoming, but um, you know, I like welcoming as well, but I mean, inclusive, I mean, I think is more, is a stronger term, and it, and it it has more power and understanding too.
Propels innovative ideas to create a safe and inclusive community.
I, I personally still like welcoming, welcoming more, but I'm, I'm fine with deferring to group if everybody feels differently, so I, I just feel like welcoming is more less, less buzzwordy, it's also less like, to be frank, it's less politically charged, um, and I think this, like, to me, I think the vision statement should be something that e- everyone in our community can resonate, like, hopefully they can resonate with everybody, um. I didn't, I, but again, I'll, I'll kind of defer to the group if everybody is on board with inclusive.
I mean, I, that, that was my sense too, that inclusive has so much baggage, um, that people sometimes react differently to, and welcoming is not, so
Well, welcoming to who?
Right.
To every individual.
Every individual who's here? I mean, right, and, and that's where every, it's welcoming community, right? Not welcoming to every, everybody, um, necessarily, so the community as it is is welcoming, but welcoming to people who look like them, who, right, that's, and I think that's what you're trying to capture with that inclusivity, right?
Yes.
Because the individual component of this is just the individual, where individuals have an opportunity to thrive, that could be the individuals who are already here. And it could, that could for some, that could be perceived as very insulated state, right?
So safe, inclusive, and welcoming.
Fine with all three, all three, like, I don't think, I just meant if someone wanted, if, if we want, if they wanted it to be shorter, you could swap it, but I'm good with all three.
Kate, I see your finger, right, you're ready to talk?
I, so what if you switch where, so a safe and welcoming community for every individual to have the opportunity to thrive? I don't know, I still.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm still on the inclusive, I, it is a buzzword, but I think that my opinion, that it's necessary, it's necessary to say it, it's necessary for everyone to feel like they are included. And right now, not everybody feels that, and that's not just Carlisle, that's period. But I think that it's important if we're saying this is, this is the town to come to, because there are people who think don't go to Carlisle. They, they think that is not the place where you're gonna be safe, don't go there. We know different, but there are people who look like me who don't, who come from someplace else where they see more people who look like me and they don't feel that here, so this isn't one of those places that they feel like, oh, you should definitely go see Carlisle. You know, if you're telling somebody to come here, it's not because you're gonna feel included in anything, it's because, well, you know, you can get a place to stay, or you have family there. I, inclusive for me, I like seeing it in there, because I, because I'm fitting in there.
That welcomes people who might otherwise feel other.
I think you sold me on it.
Sold, three words it is, safe, and welcoming. And I went back just very quickly and looked at the other statements, and I, and that word's not in there, and so it, it seems like having a home in your vision makes some sense, just given the conversations I got. Okay.
Can I, can I throw up two, two, I, I have to go on there, I don't like the pills. Um, two, two ideas, two ideas, um, that, both of which I like much better, is either inspires or fosters.
Inspires. Inspires, history inspires.
Inspires.
Inspires. Innovative ideas. Alright.
Is your second idea to make it everyone as opposed to every individual?
Is your second idea to make it everyone instead of every individual, because that's.
Because that's what I keep looking at, is like, the word individual seems like one, that's, you said you had two ideas, and so I.
Oh, oh, two, two options, yeah. Yeah, so we're gonna go with inspires, and then, um, the grammar police would like to suggest that everyone is better than every individual for some reason.
If we were going to try to be more concise, then that is an option.
Everyone instead of every individual.
There's nothing grammatically wrong with this, I just wanna be, I just wanna be clear, but as I'm reading through it, it flows better. It is, it's a lot of syllables.
Individual's wrong.
I'm, I'm okay with everyone, but if we all want to just stick with every individual, that's fine with me too, I don't know.
No, 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 I, I'm, I'm okay with it, my, because if we're saying, to me, if we're saying inclusive then, okay, so we don't have to say individual, because we are letting people know as an individual, we're saying that it's inclusive. So that means everybody is included, so I'm okay with that.
All right, everyone has the opportunity to thrive and make a difference. Wow, what great work you've done in the time we've had. So, um, we're gonna leave it. So, um, we're gonna leave it here that this is the framework that we'll come back with. Uh, we will be working with the staff in the coming months, um, over the summer on implementation. Um, this will all come back to you all for adoption at a future meeting. I don't even know the time dream off the top of my head, but it's in the early fall.
Yeah.
And, um, and we'll turn it back to you to run the meeting for public.
Thank, thank you. Um, and there is no new business. Is there any public comment? Go ahead, take the podium up. Name it, I guess, please.
Hi, I'm, I'm Angela Smith. I've lived in Carlisle for thirty-three years, raised my seven children here. And first of all, I really wanna thank you for. Uh, all the effort you've, you've put into this. Uh, I attended the two. It was two or three, uh, public meetings. And one of the themes that came up was that we all really sensed that Borough Council cares about. Us as individuals and what happens in the community. And we can see that in your, all of this time and effort that you're taking. And also, we all mentioned that we really appreciate Stephanie's, uh, messaging to the community. Most people who showed up at this meeting said, oh, I, I found out about this from some of Stephanie's messages. So I really wanna, uh, thank you for that. Um, second, I'd just like to make a couple of comments that about things that occurred at the meetings that. I felt were not necessarily included in the summary here. One was that, uh, it was mentioned that people had difficulty with the word daring. And when we had conversations about that at my, at my table, uh, first of all, I'd like to note that most of the people at my table were. Young people in their, in their thirties, so they weren't just, you know, maybe elders like me setting their ways. They were, there was a variety at the table. Um, but what I heard people saying was that people want stability. And we've been through so much as a community, as a nation globally in the past couple of years. I think people really are seeking stability and language that sounds like another fast change. I think worries people. That's the sense that, that I got. And none of you caused the pandemic or most of these. Fast changes that have occurred in, in the world or even locally, but I think people really want to know that there's. Um, prudence involved in decision-making and stability. And the other thing is that people want to matter as individuals. The. The language or the other comment was that the original language did seem vague and some of you mentioned that and we appreciated that. Because I think that when people hear vague language, it doesn't inspire trust the way specific language does. It sounds like sophistry. Well, what are they really saying? And, and maybe they mean something different than I think. And so I think specific language. It, it's not necessarily a matter of the, the reader saying, oh, Borough Council's using this vague language to trick us. It's just. I wonder what they mean. Is that the same thing that I'm interpreting? So I do think specific language is really important. That's another thing that came up. And, uh. It's, this process is so fast. That's concerning me. Only about one point five percent of the community has been involved in, in giving any comment. It's only been two months. And I'm hoping that there can be more. One, one of the, the, uh, recommendations that came from. The meetings was greater outreach to the community. And I really commend you for reaching out to the high school students. That was fantastic. My son came home and told me that they talked about it in civics class and was describing the process and. I was just overjoyed for, for them and for the, for us getting their input. Um, another suggestion that came up was reaching out to the church and civic leaders. Because among the people who responded, they were people who had the free time and capability to attend the meetings. And internet access to respond to the surveys. And there are a lot of people who don't have that, are left out. And their voices might not be heard. And I thi- and the reason we suggested at, at the original meeting. Reaching out to religious and civic leaders, reaching out to every church, every civic service. Uh, institution in town is because they are directly interacting with those, with the people who. Maybe haven't answered this survey. And so they might see needs that wouldn't be captured here. And, and finally, uh. The, uh, statement that the high school student made was fantastic. And I noticed that. Councilwoman Perry suggested that as a, a vision statement. To me, as a long time resident, it really seemed to reflect a, a beautiful vision for our community. And it did seem that in the process of revision, it was just that, that idea of even considering that as a, as a vision statement was just. Immediately bypassed. And I, I really would like to, to recommend that that statement be reconsidered. And also that a little more time be taken to mull this over, send this out to the community again, ask for more input. Because this is such a long, long-term vision. And I, I do see that. Based on, you know, your, your past record in the community and your statements tonight, I, it's very clear that you, you do want input from. From the community at large. So I think if, if that, the, hey, uh, and I'd just like to read that statement again. It says, a community that fosters collaborative engagement and empower, collaboration, engagement and empowerment. Where every individual has a voice and opportunity to make a positive impact. That's so much more specific from a linguistic perspective than. The statement, statement that was just read and giving people a voice. Um, I think that was one of the concepts that came up at the meeting. People do want to have a, have a voice. Um, so I, I would really like to encourage the council to reconsider that statement as a possibility. And also reach out to, if you haven't already, the faith leaders and civic leaders. In the institutions in the community for their input. And finally, just have some more iterations of community feedback. Uh, because I think you're, it's, I, I'm so impressed with this, with your, your dedication. And I know that you want people, as many people as possible to be involved. And I think that would give people more. Uh, people would feel more like stakeholders. Over the past couple of years, due to everything that's happened nationally, internationally, people just feel so alienated. A lot of people feel alienated. And we've all heard about all the books being written, Bowling, Bowling Alone. There's a new podcast by The Atlantic called. How to Talk to People. And, and I think if you have a few more iterations and involve more of the community, then people are going to feel more. Heard and feel more like they are the stakeholders, which, which I know is what you actually do want. So, so thank you very much.
Is there any, is there any other, uh, comment? I, and I'll just, I, I.
I also just wanna say, I, I hope that came across the way I intended it, not a criti- criticism, but a congratulation for just. Caring enough to hear what we have to say tonight. I, I wouldn't say all these things unless I trusted that you cared what I was saying. So I really wanna thank you.
Yeah, and I actually wanted to, to mention, I think, I think it was your comment in one of the, the first meetings that generated a number of things that we did. After that in outreach and we didn't touch on all these specifics, so, so I'll mention them now. Um, we, we did reach out, um, to the Building Bridges Group. I'm not sure if you're familiar with those, but they're, that encompasses probably just about all the, all the churches. Um, and community stakeholders. Um, also, um, through the Housing Authority, um, that disseminated it to the residents. Um, through the DCA, um, so the downtown business owners were, were encompassed in that. The Community Action Network, which is a network of nonprofits, academia, um, and government and other, other stakeholders in town. Um, Chapel Point, the residential community, we of course sent the survey out to all borough properties, the high school classes, as you, as you mentioned. Um, Stephanie, who you, who you thanked, who deserves all, all of that. Um, there were twenty-seven posts. Over several platforms from March twenty-fourth through May twenty-fifth. Um, and I won't go into details of those, but they were, they were out there. Um, hard copies of surveys were made available at the community center, um, here, here at Town Hall, Hope Station, Basel Library, Police Station. And East Side Neighbors Association, um, which is one of the, probably the more active, um, neighborhood associations in the borough. We shared the survey at the Downtown Earth Day event and sent two mass emails through Citizen Lab to registered users. To the, the point, I mean, we're, this isn't gonna roll back to us until early, early fall for final approval. So there's. Opportunity, uh, perhaps for people to, to continue to provide input. When, when does our next newsletter go out? Okay, so are we at a point where we can still maybe make this a significant part of the newsletter? Or is that a reason? Kind of where, where things stand? Yeah, so there's another opportunity that goes out to everybody and continue to sort of roll this out. I, I don't know that the, uh, obviously the postcards with the survey, that kind of thing's not necessarily just going in the newsletter, but just keep the, all those groups. Informed on where things stand. Okay. Anything else? Nothing further?
Okay, John. I just have a question. So like, are, are we, what we put together here is not set in stone? Is that correct? That's like the next iteration and then we'll, uh, like it, there's, so there's opportunity for. Everybody in the borough to provide additional feedback and then we'll meet in the fall to potentially approve or revise and approve. These statements, is that?
There's gonna be, there's gonna be a final approval. I, I asked Julie if you wanna kind of step up and, and just maybe clarify that. What's happening over the next couple of months and what typically sort of, uh, public input would happen at this point?
Yeah, so the public input that we already have received is what we will use, that it's what's gonna inform this next phase of implementation work. With the staff that we'll be doing. So it is our assumption from here that the framework is established. And then we work with the organization on, okay, what do we need to do now in order to move the needle? There are a lot of ideas provided in that public input, you know, that are in there. We will be working with the leadership team here to, to move that forward. It will all come back to you for final adoption. So theoretically, yes, you could again, change it, but there is no more. Um, public outreach that is part of our plan of work at this stage in the process. It really moves into the organization to begin the doing.
Okay.
Okay.
So yes, yes, there's an opportunity, but that, it's kind of the, you know, the, the, the opportunity for that is, has narrowed, I suppose. Yeah. Right, right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Does that change where you feel like we should be at this point?
No, I think that, that helps. I just. I don't know what we used to wear as the vision and there's, I don't know, I'm just still like bouncing around like the wording on some of these things. But I think the general, I like. So, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, anything else? Could you go to the order? Okay.
Very occasionally at the end, someone will come and say, oh, but there's two wears and let's just make this final, like little bitty tweaks like that. That are truly not substantive, that are just maybe some style things. So, you know, when it comes back to you for adoption, that type of thing is easy to do. But the overall direction at this point is in motion and then we move the organization into implementation.
Yeah, so if we, so, so to the, to the point, like if the, the high school student's proposal, if we were going to do something with that, we should be doing that tonight. Right, I mean, that's, uh, so that, I mean, that's an important point to make, right? So, but we're all relatively comparable with where we are. Okay. Okay, okay. Go ahead. We'll, we'll continue public comment, yeah.
I'm just wondering what it would take to extend the process. I mean, why does it have to? Be the end of public input tonight? What would it take to extend it longer? That's my first question. And second, um. Writing, this is reflective writing of a vision that's going to carry us through five, ten, fifteen years. And even high school students writing a paper would not. Collaborative, collaboratively writing a, a group project would not spend fifteen minutes revising parts of it or an hour. On the whole thing and then be finished. I think this is too important to just have a quick. Discussion about language. The statement does have a lot of vague wording, which is what almost everyone objected to. And, um, I just felt, I, I don't know, I don't know your name, ma'am, in the white sweater, but I, I just, it just seemed that Borough Council would say. Some things and then you would say, well, I like this word, I like this word, I like this word, but maybe that's not what the community likes. Maybe that's not what the council would really intend if they had more time to deliberate. So I think the process was just so fast that this isn't really reflective of. What you would all agree on if you had more time and also what the community would appreciate if there were another iteration of. Of input. And because it's so, a vision that's carrying us through so long, I think to just close that after one quick meeting. Where that statement that several council members appreciated wasn't even seriously considered and. You know, that, um, viewer at, saying, well, I like this idea add in these other words. I don't think that really is reflective of the process. And, and I, I don't think that really gets at the values of, of the community very well. So I, I would like to just request that there be a way to. Um, for council to have more time to mull over those wording. It, it doesn't even seem that everybody agrees on all the wording. And how can you agree on that in this short space of time? So I would just like to request that council take more time to. Find agreement on the wording and also just send it out to the community and get more, more input. So that there, there's. We're, we're all united as, as stakeholders and we don't have, um. Questions or vagueness or division going forward. Because without a firm foundation, all the other processes just. Aren't going to have the kind of unity that, that I know all of us hope to have. So that's my, my request is that. Council take more time to consider the language and also that, uh, we have more times, there are more opportunities. For iterations of, of community input. So that maybe send another vision statement out to the community and people say. Yes, this is exactly what we meant the first time with all of our comments. Or a lot of people say, no, this really, I don't feel in, included by this. So those are my two requests, that council take more time with the, have more time with the wording when you're not so time pressured. Or there's time to really be reflective and that the community have additional, more formal opportunities for input. On whatever you come up with next.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just comment in, in response to that. One, and sorry for the, the sports analogy. Um, but, um, that this is like a short period of time tonight is, is kind of like turning the TV on. Right before a team scores a touchdown from the five yard line and you see a nine second play. Well, it took all that time leading up to that to get down, down the field. Um, so it was a, a long session, uh, Saturday back in, I forget the date, March. Um. It, it's been hours of, of our time in preparation for this meeting individually. I mean, I, I don't know how much time everybody spent on this, but you know, it took time to prepare, prepare for this. So this wasn't sort of walking into this and winging it. Um, it was hours of, of meetings with the public. It was, it was probably, I'd probably say hours. Uh, devoted by staff and others reaching out to the public and trying to get that input. And, and I know it's, I think you said one point five percent, um, provided input. Yeah, it, that's, that's probably not that, that, that terrible if you look at, um. If you look at the typical public input you're going to get. It might be better than average. I don't, I don't know. Yeah. Um, and, and so I think we got very meaningful, um, input. I went through and looked at, Steph was good enough to put together some spreadsheets that pulled together all the, the individual input that we received. And looking through that, there was a lot of support for what, what was there. And there were some comments about. Vagueness and that sort of thing. But there, there was a lot of conflict within those comments, as you can imagine. I mean, that's, it's a community. So we're never going to get everybody in the community to agree to it. Um, we may not all be a hundred percent satisfied with everything. But every time you try to satisfy one person, then the other person's gonna be a little less satisfied. And it's, it's hard when, when people ask for specifics in a vision statement and these type of documents, I'm not sure. What they mean by that, because it's a, it, it is going to be a little vague. A vision statement's gonna be a little vague. It's aspirational, it's more general. You want specifics, come to the biennial goal planning and we'll get in specifics. And that, but what this is going to do is going to inform how we're doing that goal planning every two years. It's already in part, uh, because we had a sense of where this was going, informing some of the things that we're doing in our land use. Um, subcommittee that's, that's working on, uh, land use reform to make it more inclusive. And, and do some of these things that have already been called out by the public. So it's not just this, uh, you know, uh, it's not just this. Couple of hours that we've spent. So it's not just this, uh, you know, it's not just this couple of hours that we've spent here. It, there's been a lot leading up to this. And I'm happy to, to give the public time, more time to provide input. And I think we should do what I talked about earlier, and if we get something that says to us, wow, we, we really, we really misinterpreted, or we missed the vote on something, we can come back and, um, and, and make a change when it's time, time for approval. But I, I've been in the, I, I've been as a solicitor, as an elected official for maybe too long at this point, and, and, and my time's coming to an end on that. Um, but the, my experience has been, at some point, you just have to make it, you have to make a decision, move it forward, because you can keep going out to the public, and you just, you just keep getting the same repetition of things where you have conflict in the comment, and at the end of the day, we're all elected by at least a majority of, of the public, and we need to make, we need to make decisions, trying to do as much as we have to get that public input. Um, and I, I think we, I, and, and seriously, thanks, thanks to your early comment, I think we did a better job than we otherwise would have, would have done, so. Did I say anything out, out of line? No, okay, okay. Is there any other, any other public comment? Okay, this meeting, oh, go ahead.
I think you've gone above and beyond what I would ever have imagined, uh, if I were guessing what would happen in any community. But it really was the, the vision statement, I thought, um, didn't, people said originally that the vague language was, was, um, disturbing them in the, in the first meeting, vague language and language that sounded, daring was the word that they, sort of the vague language. Um, I think the high school student statement, I'm just going back to that because I heard that, and it just inspired so much trust. And I think when the, when giving everyone a voice for a specific, but it still gives, gives a lot of, offers a lot of opportunity for how to give everyone a voice, but where everyone has a voice, that's a lot more specific than just saying inclusive. I'm not saying worthless, but a lot more specific than saying inclusive or everyone, and that's, and then, um, like, a lot of people do, and about, you don't really know definitely what's meaning in the final statement. If I just ran back, if I just walked over and talked about something, I don't think, what does that mean? Cause the words themselves are not specific, like that was the statement, I was hoping for a more, more specific language that's still like, um, does he capture about the, the image of the community, like, it wasn't restricted, they're just saying we're on programs, but everyone has a voice, is, is more, um, speaks more to the desire of individuals to matter, and also helps people know what, what it means to be, what everyone needs. So that, that really was, my comments really just directed for the vision statement, not, not so much for the other, yeah, case.
Yeah, you, you probably tell from my earlier statement that I, I like that, sort of the individuality of it, uh, so I, I agree with you on that. Uh, I think what we were trying to do is craft something that's, we, we could, we keep adding words and keep adding words, and then it sort of loses meaning, because nobody remembers what it says, and, and, um, the, and, and at least we took daring out. So, so, is that, sorry. But that, I, I, you know, I agree with that, when it was a little, probably a little too, too much for, for Car, Carlisle. Uh, or, or certain parts of Carlisle. Joe, you were gonna, yeah.
Yeah, just like, um, first of all, thank you for your feedback, wish everybody would come and share those sorts of thoughts. Um, two, two things about your, your concerns, um, one is, is to me, to, that's a process challenge for us, um, and that has to resonate in everything that we do. It's one reason I was comfortable kinda pulling it out. Um, and I, I also feel like we, um, my peers here are, are committed to that, which makes, obviously, those who are reading the statement don't understand maybe, um, how important that is. Um, but that was a consideration, and making me feel more comfortable in, in leaving it out, so, um. Third, uh, we're gonna be doing this again in about seven years. So, um, I, I had to be educated, what a strategic plan was. Um, five to seven years comes and goes very quickly. So we're gonna be right back in here, and before you know it, we're going to make an even better vision statement, we're gonna make better objectives, and we're gonna have moved the borough, um, further, and we'll be better then. And, um, whi, which is a smaller timeframe than our comprehensive plan. So keep, keep, you know, keep all of these lessons of going through the process in mind, and, I mean, it, it'll be remarkable how soon we're gonna be doing this again. So, um, I look forward to the next time. Thanks.
Okay, thank you all, and thank you again. This meeting is adjourned.